I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you there Sandy?
I sure am. I thought I muted myself so he wouldn't have to hear me.
Oh.
I messed up.
Okay, call the amendment to order, approve the agenda.
Uh, Trish, did you have one thing you wanted to add to this?
I do, um, have a precinct agreement between the city and the county. And that needs to be approved so that Gloria can do that this evening.
Can we just put that down at the bottom?
Yep.
Precinct agreement between?
Humboldt, city of Humboldt County.
City of Humboldt and Humboldt County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Oh, good morning Bruce.
Is that just?
Hello.
Hello.
You hear us buddy? I can hear you.
All in favor? Welcome.
So, with that addition of the precinct agreement, it's just between Humboldt and the county?
Yes.
Are other cities involved?
No.
Okay, so with the addition of that, anything else?
Claims.
No, no claims, you look it up there.
Towards the top there Dave.
So, with that precinct agreement addition, I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, approve the minutes.
I read through the minutes list, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any other comments? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, down to claims.
We got claims of a hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and forty-one thirteen cents. And drainage of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, okay. Get out of the way, I'll go to the bottom again, general public. Anybody beating down the door, which is good. Moving on to Ben.
Morning.
Come on Ben.
The first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve the 2080 agreement between Humboldt County and Gilmore City for jurisdiction control of farm-to-market extensions within the city's corporate limits. The most recent census dropped, uh, the town of Gilmore City below five hundreds. Where they were getting a hundred percent funding directly from the state of Iowa. The state, once you drop below five hundred, the state reduces a portion of that and transfers it to the county. With all of these smaller communities, uh, we transferred that twenty-eight, with the 2080 agreement, we transferred that money back to the to the smaller communities and that allows them additional money to maintain
That portion.
That portion of the farm-to-market. And then obviously, when, when the county has payment projects, we still pay a percent or twenty-two P.
Yeah.
But this allows additional revenue for the smaller communities and...
Which they technically would have gotten straight from the state.
If they were above five hundred, yeah, they would have got full funding.
I think, yeah, it's understandable, uh, so basically all the communities being pretty small, do it this way?
Yeah, we have a 2080 agreement with every other community other than Gilmore.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the 2080 agreement to transfer judicial and control of farm-to-market extensions within the city corporate limits of Gilmore City.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve, boards deny, a driveway request for Harold Trask in section twelve of Lake Township. Harold is requesting an eighty-foot driveway which is larger than what we're allowed to improve without the board's approval. He's planning on putting this in on the half-line which he owns full-size of the, the half-mile section, so. We would do it normally under a shared driveway if it was two property owners.
Mm-hmm.
But in this instance, it's one property owner.
Yeah. Hey, this is on Blackout.
Uh, no, this is on Xenia Avenue.
Xenia, okay, alright.
Is this, well, is it looked at? Is this?
Yeah, they've been out and looked at it.
The fire pipe?
Uh, yes, this one's a fifteen-inch.
Okay, oh, yep, yeah, so it's brand-new?
It'll be a brand-new driveway, yes.
Okay, alright, I'll make a motion to approve the driveway request for Harold Trask in section twelve of Lake Township.
I'll second.
Any other comments?
My other comment is, with the pipe, you make sure that the depth of said pipe when it's put in is correct for the grade of the ditch. Cause we all know that most ditches, if they haven't been recently cleaned out, need to be. We always, you know, for whatever.
Yeah, Dave usually goes out and spays down to what the
Where it should be.
Line should be at, it's the owner's responsibility since he's doing an owner construction.
Yeah.
It's his responsibility to bury that.
And do you have language Ben, if, uh, you know, gets constructed by the owner and they say they don't have the depth low enough on the pipe? And you, county, you know, year or two down the road says, well, we're gonna clean this ditch out, or this section of ditch. Finds that it's not, it's their responsibility to put it down to the correct grade, is that true?
Usually, what would happen with that is if they did not bury it down to the proper depth, we, we've still got that five hundred dollar check from the property owner. We come back and say that they need to lower the pipe at that time.
Cause when it's done, you will look at it.
Right.
Oh, okay.
We give, we give an approval after it's done.
Okay, so you do double-check that that is the case?
Yes.
Okay, cause that's always can be a concern, but other than that.
You think you're planning on doing that this fall yet, you think, throw it out in the?
Ground's frozen.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
You'd have to do it for spring, you'd have to do it this spring.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just double-check them. Stuff we talk about, but not all the time.
Yep.
We've touched base on it, so, good deal.
Now.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, anything else Ben?
Yeah, I'm asked, uh, we're on rock, like I, I mentioned earlier, uh, the ARP funding has been changed with the final ruling, uh, allowing standardized loss of ten million dollars for every county. Um, Jamie Cashman did send an email out this morning confirming that. Sue has announced her retirement. It will be effective, the, and she'll work till the end of April and then use her remaining vacation to pay her into June, or into May, excuse me. So, we will be posting in the paper and the reminder for job applicants for the next couple of weeks. Try and hire a replacement and get somebody in to work on Sue for a couple of, couple of months before she leaves.
It's a lot of stuff she does.
There's a lot that she does, yeah.
So you're gonna get an ad in the paper and through the courthouse, whatever?
Have we ever put ads out in one of those, in website job locators like Indeed and places like that?
Hey Ben, I have a question for you.
Yep.
Um, I'm wondering on that driveway ordinance, is, would you be opposed if we raised the, the length or the width of those things so that it gives them a little bit more room as opposed to every time I know the, how does the ordinance read anything over, is it fifty?
Right now it's anything.
Then it has to come to us.
Right now if anything over fifty, um, we could raise that, that limit where we don't have to bring these in. We have approved everything up to a hundred foot, I believe.
Yeah, my question, are you be opposed to do it now?
No, I can put that on the agenda, uh, to review the driveway policy and possibly alter it.
The width?
Yeah.
I just, I think that way, I mean, we don't need to go something crazy, but just something that you guys have the option and fifty foot is the, instead of going fifty, maybe go seventy-five or whatever that number is, just so you, you can make that decision and, just a thought.
Yeah, I, I can put it on the agenda for, for the board to talk about and make a decision on.
I agree with that.
Okay. Rick, you have a question?
Yeah, um, e- even, even with that, um, if there's one that still meets falls within the guidelines, but you have questions about it, you can bring it to the board to deny it if, if you think it needs to be.
Right.
For some other unknown reason. But if it's one here, it wouldn't want, want to come to the board if it was two different landowners.
Right, it wouldn't even, yeah, that's pretty much been brought in.
On two different four, or six quarters.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay.
As far as advertising, we've never advertised.
Oh, that was on the Indeed, yeah, that's what I was talking about earlier.
Um.
I just thought it might get out of the community then, you know, somebody from a hundred miles away might see that and think, oh, I might wanna move to Humboldt.
Usually with some, I mean, we've, we've had that happen, uh, one of the guys that works in our Humboldt shop actually moved from Colfax up here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because he was in a relationship with somebody up here, I mean.
Yeah, he heard about it because he had some connection.
We're not trying to draw somebody from Des Moines to, to come up to the position, I mean, hopefully they're, they're local. Makes things easier when they know all the farmers
True.
That come in. Yeah, I, I think we've got plenty of.
You got a good, you got a good point there.
I think you can use the lead still for friends though Ben, it might not be a bad idea to try and
Okay.
I mean, it would, you will get more.
Trying to grow the community.
You'll get more flyers out of California or wherever.
Yeah, probably, then just gonna, your email gets full of junk.
But don't, you, you don't, doesn't usually, you can usually tell those right away. I mean, you can do it with a glance at them.
Do whatever, I just comment.
That is all that I have.
Okay. Alright, uh, we'll move down to the sheriff's agreement or the quarter report.
Looks to be like we had quite a bit of activity last quarter.
Yeah.
Concealed weapon, that was a, a quite a bit.
It's always high on the concealed, Christmas time, they got a pistol or a rifle or something that.
Yeah, probably, a lot of Christmas gifts, possibly.
Thirty-four hundred dollars worth of.
But I'll make that motion to accept the, um, sheriff's quarterly report.
Got it first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recorder's report.
Yeah, it looks like a, um, pretty good amount in there, but that's good, so I'll make that motion to accept the recorder's.
Uh, first, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Looks like they've been busy.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I think you got that precinct, uh, agreement.
Yeah.
That we added.
Okay, precinct, uh, agreement.
This is between the city of Humboldt and the county. And it's due to the fact that we share, um, voting precincts with the rural and the city, so.
Basically, doesn't the city follow the previous election? Isn't that how that goes, or not?
Well, during their re-presenting is when they had to do the wards, they have a new ward, so the wards match up with our precincts too, so. Just the formality and Gloria has to sign off, or the mayor has to sign off on it also, so.
Is it just mainly because it's just Humboldt, because that's only city that's shared?
That has wards or precincts.
Yeah, and that no place else in the county would have that.
Right, and they're over thirty-five hundred and all that good stuff.
They need to have it.
Yeah.
Well, I would make that motion to have chairman sign the precinct agreement between the city of Humboldt and Humboldt County.
I'll second.
I'll second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now where we're at. What's this one here on the?
That's just an F Y I from
Okay.
To the, um, insurance, right?
Yep. Okay.
For Denise.
Yeah, that looks reasonable.
What's this one you handed me on the resolution?
That goes with McKinley.
Okay. I'm waiting for her then, so let's go to committee report.
Well, have, uh, Sandy, could, Sandy, have Sandy start first. Sandy gets the start? Yeah, Sandy gets the start.
I had no, um, official meeting, but I had several calls last week, but nothing official.
Okay, you, I had a board of health, uh, Friday the seventh. And, uh, we discussed a lot of things, there's still wells being plugged. Uh, didn't bring that sheet with me, I don't think, so. But anyway, uh, we had a pretty good meeting. And Michelle said, just because you see beds in the halls, no sign that you got a empty beds here and there, she says that is, all the hospitals around are full, including Humboldt. Um, when you had a two-bedroom, where they screwed the bed out in the hall, make them all one-bedroom. And, uh, that way, everything's running smooth like the law says, so. Um, other than that, that's all I had.
I didn't have any official extra meetings last week, I did meet, uh, Todd Lee, the conservation commission director. And we just visited about, uh, some campground improvements, I think it was on Tuesday of last week. We had a good visit about that as it relates to the ARP money and that, so. Other than that, no other official meetings.
I had no official meetings either.
Your turn Bruce.
Hi, on Friday I had a, uh, conference call, um, with Edmo on trying to line up uh, with the search committee for Edmo. Um, kind of getting the, the, uh, floor, the parameters for what they're looking for, what Jamie has done. And, um, I guess dealing with, uh, a group from the state of Iowa that, that takes care of, um, finding a replacement and helping us reach that goal, so. At that conference call and then they asked about ideas that we had and then our feelings were, so it was a kind of a lengthy conference call, but, um, this, this morning I re, I'm reviewing, um, the outline of what Jamie's guidelines are, what his job description was and gonna send back to them so that, uh, cause we, we thought Jamie did a great job. Their job description lines were a lot more than what we had in ours, so we're looking at that. That's all I know.
Okay. Well. Is McKinley coming, is she out there or?
Uh. Or is he gonna be on Zoom, do you know?
I think he's planning on being here personally.
Planning on being here personally, okay.
I believe.
No, they're fine. They're cold.
I'm not cold.
(laughing).
Take a five-minute recess.
You want me to text him if he has needs?
Yeah, yeah, good.
Okay, I'm, uh.
Nobody up there. What are you doing Bruce, walking around? You had a palm tree and then you had a building and now you got a fan.
I don't know, the weather looks nicer down where Bruce is.
If not three degrees.
Yeah.
Well, if you didn't look at the thermometer, you'd think it was a nice day today.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. I'm starting to record it, but so far there hasn't been anything worth recording.
Two, two, three, four.
Well, I mean, you know.
Gonna have to?
I guess.
Only one here, right?
Uh, it's her.
But, uh, I got ahold of Mike Galloway, uh, last week as far as personnel policy. He brought it back onto the
Here.
And is pushing forward. He's gonna try and have a copy of it in the next week to Trish and me and he's planning on being up here on the thirty-first to November the fifth.
Oh, good.
Where do I sign that?
Just integrate the bottom. It's really nice spot.
Does Denise know I'm gonna come and visit if it's about this?
Yeah, she does.
But that's what they're thinking, they're gonna end up with on insurance side?
That's what she's thinking, from what I can gather. Yeah, that'll be nice.
We can live with that.
Yeah. Bump it just to shade and help support our self-funding.
Yep, we did last year, but wouldn't have to be such a high percentage even when you bump it.
Mm-hmm. I was shocked when I seen that.
Yeah, well, they've raised enough over the last year, they couldn't, you know, raise it.
That is.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good news then.
Alright, it'll be in nine o'clock, McKinley's here, so we'll move on to building families.
Um, well, I just, I wanted to check in.
Feel free to come up and clarify that if you're here. Make yourself comfortable.
Um.
Tell you what, you wanna turn that mic around there for him, the one for Trish here? That way they can hear you a little better.
Perfect. Um, so I wanted to just check in, I've been in touch with, uh, with both Sandy and Eric off and on over the past few months about, um, the, uh, the two kind of topics that we had visited about previously. Um, and that is, um, supporting the childcare system here in Humboldt County and, um, getting a parent education, um, program off the ground. And, um, wanted to do, to just kind of, one, pop in and be here to answer any questions that you all might have around that. See if, um, there's some way that we can kind of, um, get things moving, uh, moving. The, the gal that we have found who would kind of take on this parent education task is fairly unique. There aren't a lot of people in Humboldt County with the skill set and the timeframe who are willing to take on something part-time like this. And I'm fearful we might lose, uh, lose her and lose that, uh, opportunity if, if we, um, couldn't kind of get the ball rolling here before too long. Um, also, um, you know, the, the childcare piece of it, um, they are doing, uh, quite a bit better at kitty cats than they were for a long time, they were raising their rates and they've been able to hire a couple more people, but the building is still underutilized and there's still a waiting list and still a need to bring in some, some new employees there. Um, the project that this mirrors in Hamilton County is off the ground there. And, um, one of the four childcare centers in Hamilton County, um, with the help of these bonuses is now at at their ideal capacity, they've got as many kids as they can take care of. I know that they would still like to get two or three more kind of part-time people, sort of floaters in there who, when somebody gets sick, you know, or calls in, you can, you can rely on, um, but we, we have had some, uh, success. Uh, one of the other big centers, um, in Hamilton County, they're not up to capacity, but they have hired eight new people since the program started. Um, and they've lost two or three, but it's, it's been a net gain of, of four or five full-time childcare workers. Um, and so they have also been able to call in families off of their waiting list. And also, I think it's important to just remind everybody as we talk about this, the economic impact, um, you know, every, of childcare everywhere. There are employers looking to hire, um, and we know that statistically, a lot of, um, women of childbearing age uh, dropped out of the labor market during the pandemic because they couldn't find childcare. And there are a number of them who, who still can't find it, we still hear from employers, um, who, you know, s- go to hire someone and then they get told, okay, I'd love this position, but you're gonna have to bear with me until I can find a place for my children. So, um, you know, there is a real, uh, economic upside to, um, to investing in childcare with these funds. And the last thing I'd like to say before I answer any questions is that, um, you know, we've researched this, um, studiously. I've read the entire thirty-nine-page interim final rule, I've worked with, um, NACO and ISAC. I've worked with, um, NACO and ISAC. Um, and we're doing things that other counties, well, what we're proposing are things that other counties are already doing. Um, Hamilton County has moved forward on the childcare. Johnson County has just announced, um, that they're gonna do two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year for the next three years on the childcare front. So, all these things are safe. You, you are not gonna be in a position where four years from now, some auditor comes in and says, "Oh, you have to pay this money back." So, with that said, can I, are there any questions that y'all might have for me?
Uh, this parent education program.
Mm-hmm.
Now, are they doing it in these other, two other counties also? Is that person gonna work in those two counties also?
It looks like they will be able to work in Hamilton County. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I'm, it's gonna work in Wright County yet or not.
Okay.
Um, but it, it looks like we, we will get that rolling in Hamilton County.
You know, McKinley, I was just looking back, this, this is one of the first things, once this ARP money was announced way back when, that, you know, was research, as you just stated, that it's always been included from day one. Uh, we have kind of the numbers for like the parent education and how things are split out, 'cause the resolution doesn't name anything and doesn't need to. But, you know, kind of the numbers that we're looking at that go to the different entities, if you will.
Yeah, it's, it's right here, I guess, I'm not sure if you have seen this. Um, she just handed it to me and...
Well, I, I read it on the computer last night.
Okay.
I thought I had a copy of it, yeah, I just read it.
So, this looks kind of like a mixture?
Want to print a copy of it? Oop, wait, or do it?
Is this the only one, like just the resolution? 'Cause that's why I was...
On the backside?
No.
I thought I'd seen it earlier today too, but boy, I don't see it now.
You handed it to me, I don't think you handed it to the rest of them.
Oh, that's it.
It's right there.
Okay, well, this is, is this what we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I had brought a few examples. This, you know...
Passed it back. Yeah, it's more of the breakdown.
Okay, that's what, yeah, that was basically, um...
This is for the, the parent education part down here, this?
Yep. And most, that, uh, parent education, McKinley, is gonna help with the hiring of the other person.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Which I think is huge.
Well, you gotta have a good person.
Well, and they have Angela, this would be in conjunction with what she does.
Yep, yep.
But there's, it's basically understaffed and underfunded. Is that a pretty fair statement?
Yeah, yeah. And she, um, um, we will probably take about, uh, I can't remember, and the proposal I sent you, if it was twenty-five-hundred or three-thousand dollars a year of this, um, to get to keep Angela at forty hours a week. Um, and then the rest will go to this new person who's gonna put on, um, two group classes, uh, each year in Humboldt County, um, for parents. And I, I'm hesitant to say her name, but I think you're probably all familiar with who she is. She's got a solid track record and she's actually taught classes in this same vein in the past. She's already generated some referrals, so she's got people ready for that first class. Um, and what parent education does, um, is it, it really gives parents the skills to manage, um, children's challenging behaviors, right? And right now, because of the pandemic, I mean, we saw here in Humboldt County, was it last year? We had so many attempted, uh, suicides at the middle school. Kids are just in a rough spot right now. And so part of that, obviously, you can talk about mental health and all those things. But the other part of it is, okay, well, your mom or dad and your kid is going through these things, you know, how do you deal with that? How do you support them? How do you keep them safe? And, and so that's what a parent education class will do, is it'll give parents the skills, uh, they need to deal with some of these behaviors, because, um, I'm not talking into the microphone. Oops. Should work, okay. Um, because, uh...
Is there any, I know you can ask them to attend these classes, but it's certain, probably voluntary.
Yeah, what, it's, all the services we provide are voluntary. What we do see sometimes is that DHS may tell, um, a parent, "Hey, if you ever want any hope at getting your kid back, then you need to take one of these classes." But we don't force them. If they don't wanna do it, they don't... You know, we, everything that we do is voluntary and we don't want, um, and we have a real mixture of people that come in and take these classes, um, all different socioeconomic status and background. And, um, and so we don't want somebody in there who's not actually interested ruining it for the people that are. So it is involuntary.
All right.
Well, I think, I mean, again, this is one of the first things we talked about and it's been reviewed and kept around and came up with the fact that a resolution will, will move this forward. I know there's been some changes in the whole ARP thing very recently, but, and I don't know. But I'm guessing you're still gonna need to move forward with any funding with the, with the resolution.
Yeah.
And this, I think, would be a great start.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
This was basically agreed upon some months ago. And it just kind of languished around, 'cause we didn't know exactly how to do it. But I think based this off Hamilton County with their resolution, and they've moved forward here almost two months ago, I think.
Yep, and you go into a little more detail here than they do, and I think that's fine. I don't think that any of this, you know, it's my first chance to see it here, but this was all kind of, what, when we were first thinking twenty-eighty agreement, it looks like you just pulled that out. I mean, I'm totally comfortable with it and I don't, I don't think it's gonna, you know, I think this will work perfectly.
Well, it spells out a little bit more where the money goes.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's a little bit more in the game and give some responsibility, you know?
Yeah.
So, I would agree with that.
Where are we at on the study?
Well, um, we, we haven't been able to start it because I, I haven't had the money to, um, to pay for it.
I, I understand that, but my question is, is so if this thing is to move forward today, uh, what's the timeframe where we're looking at? How far, how long it'll take to do this study? And then, because in two to three years, I still wanna know that if we had eleven kids or twenty kids, that this thing's gonna float itself.
Right, that it's sustainable.
That in three years, we aren't gonna have two-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars to keep pumping into this thing and make it a viable product.
Um, so, so we just, another childcare center in our three-county area that we're working with, um, just started the, a similar consulting project, um, with this group that I would, um, work with. It's, uh, uh, why can't I remember their name right now? Um, First Children's Finance. Um, and this is one of the things that they specialize in. So it took about, um, about a month, about six weeks, of course, the holidays were in there, where, which slowed things down from when they, um, signed up and said, "We wanna do this," until they got started. And they, they've, um, so I would imagine we're looking at probably about, um, a month to six-week timeframe after we, um, reached the agreement on what we want, and then they'll begin. And then depending on how much we ask for, um, these studies can take, and also not just how much we ask for, but how quickly the center itself provides the information to the consultant, right? It's a two-way street. One, we need them to do their work, but the other is, we need to get them the info they need. And, you know, and if you're the center director and trying to provide that info and you're also in ratio because you're short of staff, I mean... But anyhow, usually within three to six months, these things are all wrapped up and you have a final report. Um, and like I say, that difference between three and six, a lot of times depends on the, how quickly the flow of information works. And Sandy...
I'm all about that, and as, as soon as we can get this thing moving, in my opinion, we need to move.
Yep, yeah.
I wanna make sure the study is done.
And Sandy, you, we can, I was just gonna say, I'm sure that you will have board members who will be able to support your director in that flow of information, right? With some of that financial stuff.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, that won't be a problem. Um, well, I'll just make that motion then, um, to accept resolution twenty-twenty-two dash four.
I'd second Sandy's motion. Resolution, I believe, is a real call of oath.
Right.
Am I right? Did I get it?
Yep.
Okay. I vote aye. I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Sandy?
Vote aye.
Bruce?
I vote aye.
All ayes. There, I signed that one.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, McKinley.
I wasn't expecting it to happen today.
We're delighted. We put out the vote and not from, we had the information and needed to make it all together and get it done.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Awesome. Thank you very much.
McKinley, we'd like you to come back next week if you want it.
Come back next week. It might, it might be the same resolution, but they'll find, no, they'll find...
Put it in the minutes.
Thanks for all your help with this, McKinley.
Thank you all very much. We'll be a good steward of this money for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, McKinley. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay. I'll keep all that, down all that. Any other discussion of business? Rick? I don't have anything left. Got anything, Bruce? Bruce? Got anything? Sandy? Anything?
The only thing I would tell you, and I heard Ben say that him and I had visited about, uh, conversation with Mike, and I heard him, uh, telling you that, um, I just told him that we need to move forward that with that, so we can get, uh, some of that stuff resolved. And other than that, I don't think, uh, I made any other phone calls, so... Thank you all for filling in.
Well, enjoy your time down there. Bring back some warm weather.
Well, I tell you this, yesterday I found out that Iowa white skin burns in a hurry. You might be back by that.
I thought you looked a little red.
I, yeah, you know me, I'm tough enough that I can say, oh, I'm not burning that bad until I get back over here. My clear-cut top is, uh, washing wasn't a good deal, so... It's awful?
Yeah. Well, the only thing I wanna say is now that we started... Hey, Bruce, thank, uh, with the residents for, uh, uh, the daycare and, and the families. Maybe we need to, um, I don't know how far we've gotten on the building or anything like that for you and Dean for, um, you know, getting that going.
I haven't even done it.
Okay. Maybe we, I don't know, do you think we need to meet again as, as a committee or... I mean, we pretty well nailed everything else.
I think now that they've come out with the final rule, you probably won't have one more meeting.
Okay.
I...
I think we'll put it together.
Yeah, I agree with Sandy. I mean, uh, now that with this, we're getting this money distributed and you guys have had a good discussion about it, okay, maybe, maybe, maybe have another one, but I hope it was a good discussion. And like I said, I met with, uh, Conservation Commission. And there's good projects out there. They have some excellent projects that aren't, you know, million-dollar projects, just that this money can be put towards and some of the other things. I agree with Sandy. Let's get it, let's get this going now and get it moving forward.
I think, I think, as far as the conservation, don't you disagree, Ben? I think Tom has some really good things already.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom has...
He gave us, he gave us a packet.
Yeah.
I still have mine. Do you guys have yours?
Yes.
The packets?
Yes.
We, we went through quite a few of those, didn't we, Ben? And kinda designated which ones we thought were priority.
Yeah, I think we came up with...